Order this week's meeting of the Tacoma Park City Council. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Stewart.
Here.
Councilmember Kovar.
Here.
Councilmember Mayo. Councilmember Carrashi. Councilmember Siemens.
President.
Councilmember Smith. Councilmember Schultz.
Here.
Great, great. Tonight, we have two public hearings that we will start with. The first public hearing is on the city manager's proposed FY 2017 budget. Last week, on April 6th, the city manager provided the city council and the public with an overview of the recommended budget for our fiscal year 2017. And we, the city council is having Monday meetings for the next couple of weeks to go over different pieces of that budget. And our reconciliation items for the budget will be decided by May 4th to allow for preparation for the final budget ordinances. The budget ordinances will be considered at first reading on May 11th and at second reading on May 18th. So some folks signed in to speak, and I will call their names first, but if there are other people who would like to speak about the FY 2017 budget, you may do so after these folks. First, I have Ellen Cassidy. You can just state your name again and where you live, please.
I am Ellen Cassidy. I live at 7310 Cedar Avenue. I've lived there since 2000, and I'm one of many long-term Tacoma Park residents in our 60s and 70s who own single-family homes, love our community, and don't want to leave. And in the next few years, we're going to be aging out of our single-family homes, and we would like to stay in Tacoma Park and continue to contribute to our community even as we age out of these homes. And when I say contribute to our community, I'm not just talking about contributing to the tax base. We helped make Tacoma Park into the extraordinarily engaged community that it is today, the community that so many people want to move into. And over the years, we've invested our time and our energy and our know-how. We serve on committees, we make things happen, we serve on the city council, and we want to continue to do so. And for many of us, that means we want housing options that include condos with transportation and stores close by. So I would like to request that as the city budget plan is drawn up, part of the plan should be devoted to exploring ways of helping older people who are currently homeowners to stay in Tacoma Park even after we don't own our homes. For example, I'd like the city to work with developers of the hospital property to keep our needs in mind, along with the needs of renters and poor and working-class families. I'm not saying to subsidize my future housing, but to make sure that there are options for me besides moving out of town when it comes time for me to sell my house. As new parcels of land open up for development, I hope that the city will help to encourage the building of condos that are suitable for a middle-class senior population as part of the mix of housing that we have here, affordable and non-subsidized housing. And I hope the city will take a look at what other small towns have done to create options for an older, middle-class population of homeowners aging out of their homes. Again, I'm not talking about subsidizing a condo for me. I'm talking about encouraging developers to build condos for middle-class current homeowners who will be able to afford to buy our own condos. And I'm talking about including middle-class senior renters and owners as part of our city's future. Because if the city fails to find a place for long-term community residents like myself as we age out our homes, Tacoma Park will lose an important resource that has helped to make our community what it is today. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Ruben Sniffer is next.
Hi, Ruben Sniffer, 705 Erie Avenue. I would like to second the wonderful presentation of Ellen about encouraging housing for low-income, middle-income, and homeowners, et cetera, in Tacoma Park as part of the budget. I have a couple of other hobby horses. My favorite one is the, I'll call it the rainy day fund. You've all heard me do this before, but I'll make my pitch again, which is that I believe the budget includes too much money in unrestricted reserves for emergency. I believe we should follow the guidelines and keep the sort of two months in there. We, I note that over the years, we have added the equipment replacement reserve, an emergency reserve, and other reserves for things that used to come out of the rainy day fund and no longer do, so that that's a justification for shrinking that part of the budget. The second thing I want to highlight is I support efforts to encourage homeowners and landlords in the city to do more on renewable energy, whether that's city-provided subsidies or whatever the city can do to encourage renewable energy within the city. And the third thing I want to mention is quite a few years ago, we had a growth in crime, and we increased the size and budget of the police department. Crime has gone down in Tacoma Park, but instead of going down, the police budget has continued to increase. I urge the council to, I'm not interested in a reduction in the police department's budget, I'm interested in slowing the growth in the police department's budget. I don't think it's necessary, given the change in the crime situation. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Great. And now, Mr. Arthur David Olson.
Arthur David Olson, Hancock Avenue, on the nature of, size of, and annual addition to the equipment replacement reserve as distinct from the rainy day fund. I don't drive. If I did, I wouldn't want a fancy car, and unlike my salesman dad, I wouldn't replace it every three years. I might buy a $25,000 car every 10 years. Since I don't like to pay interest, and I don't like big shocks to my budget, I'd save $2,500 a year for 10 years, buy the replacement car and start over. Tacoma Park has a fleet of cars and lots of other stuff, but the idea is the same. We avoid borrowing and smooth expenses by saving toward replacing stuff. And it's right for us to do so. We are the ones who are wearing out equipment by using it, so we should bear the cost of replacing it. In the example of my car, I'd have anywhere from nothing to $25,000 saved away at any given time. On average, I'd have half the value of the car. That's the level we should expect for the city's equipment replacement reserve. If a cap is to be established, that's the appropriate level for the cap. Using a replacement reserve spreadsheet made public last year, I totaled the acquisition cost of the equipment we now have. It's about $7.9 million. The budget projects a June 2016 replacement reserve balance of about $3.9 million, about 49% of acquisition costs. The reserve is just about the expected level. If anything, since inflation will make replacement costs greater than acquisition costs, the reserve is lower than I might like. Current practices are working, so I see no need to establish a cap. The 2015 spreadsheet shows on its last page that we're putting about $950,000 a year worth of wear and tear on our equipment. I expect that this year's spreadsheet will show a similar figure. The proposed budget calls for adding only $800,000 to the reserve. I hope that once the updated spreadsheet is made available, the council will fully fund the equipment replacement reserve. At a time when we're considering seeking one or more bond realms from the state, it's especially important to have solid evidence that the city is conscientiously acting to meet future expenses. Thank you.
Thank you. Troy Jacob?
Jacob.
Oh, it's Jacob, sorry.
Good evening. I am Troy Jacobs, Ward 5. I live at 8010 Flower Avenue, and I want to thank the city staff and the city council for their sustained interest and support of projects like the Ethan Allen Gateway and the Flower Avenue-Green Street project. I also want to encourage council to seriously think about bonding and cost-sharing for vital projects like these. I want, as a Ward 5 resident, just to take a minute to talk a little bit more about the Flower Avenue-Green Street project, but this is really as illustration because I think some of the same things that I'm saying about it could be said of Ethan Allen project as well. The Flower Avenue work is critical not just for Ward 5, but also really for Tacoma Park at large. If you, if you live in Ward 5, though, you often will find yourself visiting the Long Branch Business Area at Piney Branch and Flower, which is straddling, you know, Tacoma Park and Silver Spring, probably far more than visiting downtown Tacoma Park. That may be a little bit of hearsay, but it is the reality. And this is a business area that is composed of African-American, African, El Salvadorian, of people of various backgrounds, and as Ward 5 residents, we are very concerned about the survival and sustainability of this, this business area. Flower Avenue is a link to that business area, but it is unsafe. It is unsafe for walkers, it is unsafe for bikers, it is unsafe for vehicular traffic. At night, it is dark, there are no sidewalks on one side, as has been pointed out, there are potholes, we've had problems with speeding, there have been accidents. As residents, we are working to improve the appearance and safety of these areas, to really grow these businesses, so that they're not only an asset for Ward 5, but also that people from other parts of Tacoma Park want to walk, bike, bus, or drive there. The Flower Avenue-Green Street improvements address these issues. I also want to point out that the stormwater improvements, you know, if we are concerned about tainted creeks and things like that, it's not just a puddle nuisance. We are at a bump in the road in terms of the budget. There is a funding gap, and I would encourage us to think very carefully, given that we have a small city and a small budget, to really consider bonding. The other thing is, I also want us to encourage thinking about cost-sharing, as we have seen with the Flower Avenue-Green Street project with WSCC work to reduce the burden on the budget. And I think that these are doable projects that are within the city's reach and that are good not just for Ward 5, but also for the city at large. Thank you.
Thank you. That's all the folks who had signed up on the list. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on the FY 2017 budget? Please come to the podium and...
Hi, everyone. I'm Pat. I live at 7301 Maple Avenue. Hope everyone's doing well tonight. Just want to thank you for the support you've given us for the play events we've held in the past seven years, going from a play committee to now a nonprofit, Let's Play America. I just have two quick points I want to make tonight. One is expanding the co-sponsorship with the recreation department. They're fun, it's the ideal place or the ideal group in the city that we should be partnering with, and when we partner with them, teens that volunteer can receive community service, and that's huge. That gives them a chance to do something that they need to do for a graduation requirement, and they get to learn leadership skills and have fun with us. I'd love to see this go from two play activities that we, play events we already hold, the two play days, the September and February, and expand that to four. It may or may not happen, even if we ask to have that for four, but I'd love to see some youth in Tacoma Park that would like to close a street to play, that they, that they could organize that on their own with some assistance and guidance from us, and that's just really a hope of mine, that I hope can happen. The second thing is, you have the summer youth program. I believe this is the third year I've asked to work with two to 12 youth. I've asked that the youth be paid by the funds that you have for them and for some funds for operational expenses. But summertime's the best time to go out and play. We have all these wonderful playgrounds in Tacoma Park. Wouldn't you love to know that on one night, we can have a spontaneous, big hide-and-go-seek in Tacoma Park in one of our parks? They would help me with the picnic play and parade watch that we invite a lot of people, maybe a playful yard sale where they'd learn how much work it is to hold a yard sale. So, anyway, thanks for your time and hope everybody has a playful evening.
Thank you. Anyone to speak on the FY 2017 budget?
Hi, I'm Jim Williams. I live at 16 Sherman Avenue. The last time I was here, there was discussion about the renovation and expansion of the library, and at that time, the, some of the newer council members said that they would like to meet with the architect. They talked about actually increasing the amount of money that was going to be spent by, I think, twice as much. And I'm just kind of curious if, or I'm hopeful that this is still, you know, going ahead, that they're, I don't know if they met with the architect or whatever, but it seemed like this, the library expansion was heading a bumpy road for a while, and then, like I say, the last time I was here, you know, people seemed to be really getting behind it. And so I would just like to encourage, you know, any of those who are for it to do so because I was at Montgomery County Library tonight, I'm in a Montgomery County Library usually once a week, and I can tell you, my experience there is totally different than what you have here, and I think those people there, sort of like here, are understaffed and overworked. But, you know, what comes out of this library is so far beyond what you get out of the Montgomery County libraries, and I don't really have anything more to say than that, but I hope that this, you know, I encourage the council to keep moving forward with the library plans. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And Mr. Williams, if you have time tonight and want to stay, we will be discussing the library during our work session, or you can catch us on TV.
Hello, I'm Pat Hanrahan. I live right across the street from the library on Cedar at Philadelphia, and I'm also here to support the library renovation and the speedy moving ahead of it. I use the library, I feel as though it's my living room away from home. I use it almost daily. I take care of my grandchildren part of the week. We're over here for circle time, for borrowing books, and I raised my children in Tacoma Park, and we used it then. I've been here since 1977. So I know that there are issues with the library that need to be addressed quickly and so that the library can continue to function. There are problems like where librarians can work, where patrons can be. The children's room is used for everything, it's almost a multipurpose room, and it would be nice so if the children's room could be used, if there were a room for the children to use for circle times and all of that without disturbing other young patrons who want to use the library facilities. I also think what I've heard is that the heating and cooling systems need, are in dire need of attention. I'm currently the vice president of the Friends of the Tacoma Park Library. I was president last time I spoke to you, and I'm also, I continue to serve on it, so I'm speaking for the Friends too tonight. And slightly off-topic, I also wanted to say that I support what Ellen said. As I've mentioned, I've lived here for a long time and been on all kinds of committees, and I'd like to continue doing it, so I hope that there is a place for us here in Tacoma Park. Thanks very much.
Thank you. Anyone else would like to speak to the budget for the fiscal year? Go ahead, Mary Jane.
Thank you. I'm a little late, but the Spirit Club that I'm assistant teacher for, I mean, I just ran over here, and so I didn't get to sign up. Mary Jane Mochewie, Ward 2. I have some, a plan maybe to save some money for the city. Instead of all the street gentrification, and I'll show you my arm from tripping on these sidewalks, the cement is very unforgiving, I could have broken my head. If I hadn't caught my arm, I could have broken my head falling on the sidewalk on Carroll Avenue, and luckily it was near the fire department. Also, the street narrowing is difficult for seniors to navigate, it's difficult for ambulances, trucks, whatever. My friend has been hit, her car's been hit three times since one and a half years we've had Boyd Avenue. We don't, we, I can see we need sidewalks on Flower Avenue and places where high, lot of traffic, but we don't need it on places like Boyd Avenue and Lincoln where they're planning them. Just keep, have the people cut their grass, and their, some of their trees are this high, make them cut that so we can walk on it. And plus, that shoveling is hard for seniors. When you're shoveling cement, it's a lot harder on your back than shoveling on grass. And I love grass and vegetation, I hate cement, I'm sorry. Anyways, and some of that money could be used to help people, I also represent parents of special needs, adults, some of that money could be used to help us. We've asked for a grant to help more people to go to Spirit Club, but I'm not sure, I won't know probably to June or July, what's even if we get the money, and I would like to not have to beg for it. Plus, I'm concerned about my assessment, my house went up $30,000 this year. A lot of us can't afford it. I'm living on $27,000 a year after I pay for my health insurance. That, you know, the houses, I bought our house 30 years ago, $69,991,000, fixer-upper. Now it could be assessed, assessed of over $300,000, it's still a fixer-upper. And it's like, you know, some of us, and we have a multiracial, multi-economic neighborhood, I'd like to preserve, but I hate to be racial, but it's white, upper-rich white people moving in, and a slower, poorer, black minority, whites, whatever, are moving out, and I don't want to move out. I plan to be here the rest of my life, my son is special needs, I would like him to be able to stay in that house the rest of his life. If someone will keep an eye on him, if he has a guardian angel, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak to the 2017 budget? All right, then we'll move on to our second public hearing. Our second public hearing today is on an ordinance restricting commercial use of single-use plastic carryout bags. The city council is considering this ordinance that would prohibit the distribution of disposable plastic carryout bags to consumers at the point of sale. The ordinance defines a disposable plastic carryout bag as "a plastic bag provided by a retail establishment to a customer at the point of sale pickup or delivery to carry purchased items but does not include adorable plastic bag with handles that is designed and manufactured for multiple uses." Currently, as written, the ordinance provides certain exceptions to this prohibition. It would not apply to a bag used to package bulk items, including vegetables, fruits, nuts, grains, candy, or small hardware items. It would not apply to contain or wrap frozen foods, meat or fish, whether packaged or not, wrap flowers, potted plants, or damp items, hold prescription drugs provided by a pharmacist, contain unwrapped prepared foods or bakery goods, or contain a newspaper or dry cleaning. A number of people signed up for this public hearing. So first, I'd ask Marty Itner, if she would like to speak.
Hi, my name is Marty Itner, and I live at 7902 Flower Avenue in Ward 5. And I am a steward with Friends of Sligo Creek. I'm here to strongly support the plastic single-use carryout bag bill. I'm going to quote a New York Times article from 2011. "Plastic has become synonymous with cheap and worthless, when in fact, those chains of hydrocarbons ought to be regarded as among the most valuable substances on the planet. If we understood plastic's true worth, we would stop wasting it on trivial throwaways and take better advantage of what this versatile material can do for us." End quote. As steward of Sligo Creek, I see firsthand the types of trash that end up in our waterways, and I have given you all a lovely set of photographs there that show, those are photos that I've taken in my cleanups in Sligo Creek. I see a lot of plastic, mostly bottles and bags. The problem with the bags is that they get caught on rocks and trees and slowly shred into smaller strips that are difficult to pick up and intermingle with our water stream. Eventually, these strips and small plastic pieces end up in the Chesapeake Bay and are ingested by sea life. Plastic in the ocean lasts for centuries. I applaud Councilmember Smith for taking the bold step forward to address this issue. By reducing the availability of plastic bags, it increases their value. The five-cent bag tax in DC and Maryland has been successful in raising awareness and reducing consumption of single-use, non-recyclable bags. I will also note, we can no longer recycle plastic bags in Tacoma Park. Plastic bags are everywhere and not going away. By passing this measure, it will encourage shoppers to bring their own bags and educate on their value. I think we should coin this bill, the BYOB Bill, Bring Your Own Bag. Thank you.
Thank you. Kit Gage?
My name is Kit Gage. I'm president of Friends of Sligo Creek, and I thank Marty for her, her long and hard work as a steward. I'm a, despite what the front page of the current newsletter says, I'm actually not currently a resident of Tacoma Park. I was for 13 years, and I've been, since then, I've been a resident of Silver Spring. However, I was, I was on the recycling task force in 1985-ish, along with Darryl Braithwaite and a really incredible group of people, where the first really comprehensive recycling proposal was put forward to city council, which carefully consulted with us on it and came up with the first, I think, Beyond newspaper, I think we had aluminum cans and newspapers or something. It was really the first comprehensive, well-thought-out recycling effort. I was proud to be part of that. So I come at this issue with the, with having some background on this. And like Marty, I agree that the district and Montgomery County have gone a long way to acclimating people to bringing their own bags, and especially because now it's not just the city of Tacoma Park, but there's no market for plastic bags. You can't sell them, so you, nobody can, I mean, there's very little market for it. So it's a perfect opportunity to say enough, limit the quantity, limit the total that's being used in Tacoma Park, and I hope that Montgomery County will proceed in this direction as well. It's a perfect opportunity. I think the, the exceptions are very carefully crafted, I think it accommodates the farmer's market, which I've been going to for a mere 35 years, I think it accommodates it very well. People, by and large, bring their own bags for the accumulated foods, and it will accommodate having the plastic bag for your Brussels sprouts, but, but by and large, allow for, for people to use their own bags. I, I wanted to add one additional thought, which is slightly, on a slightly different topic. I'm a master watershed steward. I've worked a lot on stormwater-related issues for Friends of Sligo Creek and beyond that in Montgomery County, and I've worked a little with Darryl and others on the Flower Avenue project. I deeply support it. I think it's a critical effort, and it's, and it works consonant with a lot of the work that Darryl and others in the city have done to improve the way that stormwater is being handled up and down Sligo Creek. I think Tacoma is setting a great example, and the city sponsored... I think Tacoma is setting a great example in the city-sponsored stormwater projects. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak to the plastic bag ban? Please come to the podium.
Hi, I'm Lori Hill. I live at 7224 Central Avenue in Ward Two. My company, Systere Media, was one of the first organizations to participate in the Adopt a Spot program. So at least once a month, I pick up trash along Carroll Avenue between Sligo Creek and Long Branch. Also, every time I walk my dog, I pick up trash around my neighborhood and through the park. And one of the more popular items I see is plastic bags. And it's really possible to live without plastic bags. So I'm really excited that you have this bill, but I urge you to go further. I was really disappointed when I saw the exemptions. My first reaction was, why bother? Because we can live without plastic bags. And I brought a few things with me. This is what I do in my life. When I go to the farmer's market or the co-op and I'm buying produce, I don't use a bag. I don't need a bag to put my apples in. Now, if I'm getting something like lettuce, I use a mesh bag like this. Works fine. I can then wash this and use this as a salad spinner, okay? When I go to buy bread, I now go to the bakery and I buy it fresh, without it being placed in a plastic bag. And I said, give me that loaf, slice it for me. I put it in here and take it home and put this in my freezer. When I buy bulk at the co-op and I get my grains, I bring my own container. And I use this over and over again for grains and other products like that. And then when I go to the dry cleaner, I have this bag called, it's called a Green Garmento, okay? I did not invent this, I wish I did. You can bring your laundry, it serves as a laundry bag. And then you, I hand it to Carrot House cleaners and then you flip it around and he puts my dry cleaning in here, okay? And he attaches our order. You don't need plastic bags. We can live without plastic bags. I do it every day. And my company makes videos. We are happy to make an informative and funny video to show the residents of Tacoma Park how they can live without plastic because it is possible. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else like to speak? Oh, Mr. Lovelace, go ahead.
Pat Lovelace, your official peace delegate. 7620 Maple Avenue, Tacoma Park. I'd like to ask people to remember that plastics have served us well over the many years. It's a, it's a, benefited us in our medical and our surgical equipment, in our medicines itself, in our, in our durable equipment, our automobiles. Even my wheelchair here is largely plastic. My coat has a lot of plastic in it. And plastic has served us well. We should respect it by not using it for plastic bags. You got to get rid of these plastic bags. Because if we do, if we, if we can ban plastic bags in Tacoma Park and prove to other communities that it can work, and then we can get other communities to follow suit, that will go through a lot of ways of preserving our oil supplies. Because a lot of plastics are made from oil. You know, we're fighting in the Middle East and all we get out of it is a plastic bag. We take our boys over there and get them shot up. You know, we try to take over the world to try to control everything. You know, we got to stop doing that. If we can get rid of our plastic bags, we'd come a long way to making peace in this world and to really learning about what our world is about and using plastics only when we need them to save lives, to make lives simpler for us, to make automobiles and other equipment lightweight, and make other things easier for us so that we can get by with people like me who are disabled and can now get around in a wheelchair that is not super handy. It's not made out of iron and steel anymore. A lot of it is plastic. We got to remember that. So please, ban the use of plastics in Tacoma Park and educate the other communities while doing so. Thank you very much.
Anyone else like to speak to the plastic bag ban? Then we will go to our regular meeting. Our agenda this evening, if there's any addition or changes. Looking ahead to other evenings, this coming Monday night, we again have a city council budget work session, which is open to the public. It starts at 7:30 on Monday. We will be discussing on Monday evening programs advancing our city council goals. Then on Wednesday, April 20th, we will have a public hearing on the Streetscape Manual, followed by a work session on an update on the electric, electric synchronization, and then a budget work session discussing additional budget reconciliation items and requests for information. After the meeting, the city council will go into an administrative function session to discuss the city attorney's evaluation. Administrative function sessions are closed to the public. Then on Monday, April 25th, we have another city council budget work session that will begin at 7:30. On that budget work session, we will discuss departmental and non-departmental budgets and the budget reconciliation. Then on Wednesday, April 27th, at 6:00 PM, we will go into an administrative function, section, function session to talk with the city attorney regarding their evaluation. The session will be closed to the public. We will then have the regular meeting starting at 7:30 on Wednesday, April 27th. We will begin with two public hearings, one on the constant yield tax rate and the second public hearing on the FY 2017 budget. Then we will have possibly tentatively scheduled a number of voting items. The first is a first reading ordinance approving the franchise agreement with Comcast, which we will discuss this evening. The second, we have tentatively scheduled an ordinance approving additional expenditure for Flower Avenue Green Street design. We will have a resolution authorizing the temporary closure of a portion of Grant Avenue for the Grant Avenue Market and possibly a resolution providing for appointments to committees. On Wednesday, April 27th, we will also have two work sessions. One will be a discussion of the ordinance amending the city code regarding the restriction of the single-use plastic bags. Our second work session will be on a discussion of the Tacoma Junction redevelopment process committee and appointment process. Then on our next meeting will be Wednesday, May 4th. At this meeting, our budget work session will be on the final budget reconciliation items and a work session discussing the eliminating Avenue B permit parking program. On Wednesday, May 11th, we will have a presentation updating us on the 21st Century Community Learning Center at Essex House. And we will have a first reading ordinance adopting the FY 2017 tax rates, first reading ordinance adopting the FY 2017 storm management budget, first reading ordinance adopting the FY 2017 budget. We will also have a first reading ordinance amending the code regarding the, restricting the use of plastic carryout bags. We have tentatively scheduled a resolution adopting the Streetscape Manual, tentatively scheduled the second reading ordinance approving the franchise agreement with Comcast, and tentatively scheduled a resolution giving direction on the cable MOU with Montgomery County. Then on Wednesday, May 18th, we have a voting session to vote on the second reading ordinance adopting the FY 2017 tax rates, the stormwater management budget, and our FY 2017 budget. And tentatively scheduled a second reading ordinance on the plastic bag ban with a work session on proposed extension of owner-occupied group house registration program. And if we get that all in, we will not have a meeting on Wednesday, May 25th. So that takes us through May. Now I'd like to open it up to any other public comments on other items?
Hi, Ruben Sniffer again. I'd like to comment on the Flower Avenue Green Street project. We're going on about 10 years of effort by Tacoma Park to get this project accomplished. When I went off to Italy in 2012, I hoped it would be done when I returned.
So did I.
I know. Jared and I had a lot of chatting about this. But I am really delighted to see the progress that has been made on it. I think, I've looked at the design, it looks really quite wonderful. And I want to argue in support for providing the additional money to complete it. The list of additional costs, which were mostly unanticipated. For example, coordination with Washington Gas. Oh my God, this is so wonderful. The fact that they're going to do their work before we repave the street instead of doing their work after we finish repaving the street and so on are really important things. So I am very supportive of the city moving ahead with this project, finding the, if bonding is necessary, whatever means necessary to get this project going. And I want to say how much I appreciate the continued support of the council. Let me be sure and say this. Not just Jared Smith, but the rest of the council in moving this project forward. It does, as Troy mentioned earlier, not only does it benefit Ward Five, it's a gateway to Tacoma Park and will be really an important new feature. Thanks.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Bill Brown, 6704 West Morland Avenue. I'm also speaking for Teresa Stubbs of Eastern Avenue. She cannot be here tonight and she is addressing another meeting about the same subject. We spoke to you in mid-March about a proposed sewer line on two blocks of Eastern and West Morland that will damage, destroy, the mature tree canopy. We estimate between 21 and 26 mature trees will be cut down on the first block alone. Trees next to the easement will, some of them will need to be taken down as precaution. Others will die slowly. We asked at that time for the city's attention and assistance on this issue and we thank you for the concern and context that you made on our behalf. You were assured and passed on the assurance that the County Department of Environmental Protection would be of assistance. We have been waiting for their report since mid-March. However, more recently, Darryl Braithwaite has informed Ms. Stubbs that DEP, quote, "would not have formal authority over WSSC projects." So actually, at this point, we do not hold any hope that DEP can do anything. The vote that Mrs. Stubbs told you about, which was held by WSSC amongst the neighbors, where they're allowing the majority of the neighbors to impose what they want on the properties of their adjoining neighbors and in which WSSC counted the absence of a vote as a vote in favor of backyard sewer lines has occurred. The WSSC project manager has recently written saying, quote, "The non-unanimous votes for Sewer Block One," that's the one behind me, "mean that WSSA will, will move forward with design of a backyard sewer alignment here." Meanwhile, those of us on adjoining properties along West Morland Avenue, whose, whose, this is happening right on our rear boundary, have heard nothing, zero, zip from WSSC. I spoke to Hans Reamer's staff person about this and he said that he'd bring that point up to WSSC's attention. Nothing, heard nothing. So there's nothing assuring about this at all. It's quite the opposite and we really need assistance with this. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Mr. Lovelace?
Yes, my name's Pat Lovelace again, your official peace delegate. 7620 Maple Avenue, Tacoma Park, and that's the Franklin. One thing I'd like to do is remind people tomorrow is the first day of early voting and it goes through until the following Thursday, from the 14th to the 21st of April. And I'd like to ask people to remember, people have lost their lives for our right to vote. People have lost their families and their homes for our right to vote. You remember back in the 60s, Ku Klux Klan were killing people for registering blacks and minorities to vote? I know what it's like to be attacked by them. It's no fun. I know what it's like to be attacked, not have any health insurance at the time. You know, you got your bum out on a limb because you can't get it taken care of. I've had several fingers actually fall off because of lack of treatment and because of what the Ku Klux Klan had done to me. And I went blind and now I can't walk. I'd like to ask people, remember people like me. You want to say you wanted, what you can do to help me out? You can do a lot to help me out. You can register to vote and then get up off your keister and get out there and vote. That's what's wrong with this country. People do not vote. They complain, but they don't vote. And I'd like to see more and more people in Tacoma Park coming out to vote and getting their elderly and senior citizens out there to vote and they're disabled. Ask them if they have a way to the polls. If they don't, you can wheel them up there in their wheelchairs or you can take them there in your van or your car. There's always ways you can do it. And we have early voting and we have election day. 13 more days before election day on the 26th. There is no excuse for saying, I can't vote. We fought, a lot of us died for your right to vote. Back in the 60s, a guy had had his whole house and his family and kids burnt to death down in Hattiesburg, Alabama. And we've had other people too. Megur Evans was shot on his doorstep. Again, probably the Ku Klux Klan. Because of, he was doing his registering blacks and minorities to vote. Voting is a holy thing and we've got to remember it. We are one of the few democracies in the world and we have our right to, through a secret ballot. It doesn't matter whether you're Republican or whether you're Democrat or whatever you are. Please, get out there and vote. It's not that hard. It's not too cold. If I can do it in my condition and I can continue to fight for our rights, then there's no reason why you can't just get out there and vote. Whenever you say, can I help you out? Please, think about it. Get out there and register to vote. Thank you very much. People have died for our right to vote. Vote for peace responsibly and justly.
Thank you, Mr. Lovelace. Any other public comments this evening? We will turn now to council comments. Any council comments? Councilmember Schultz?
I want to repeat something I said at last Wednesday's city council meeting in my public comments, and that's a reminder of this walking tour of the crossroads commercial area that is scheduled for the day after tomorrow, Friday, from 1:00 PM to 3:00 PM. We have invited a lot of public officials from Prince George's County, Montgomery County, our own city, of course, the state of Maryland, as well as, that's been, has been joined by a number of the commercial property owners there. This will be a scheduled walk with stops throughout the commercial district, all four corners on both sides of the Prince George's, Montgomery County line, that will be narrated at these stops by various property owners or interests. In that case, like one of the stops will be at the, the new Tacoma Langley Transit Center. We'll have the hearing from the construction manager on the progress of that project. The whole point of this tour isn't for touristic reasons, I can assure you. It is, in fact, to lay the, lay the groundwork, to organize a bi-county, an ongoing, excuse me, bi-county commission comprised of volunteers who are, see themselves as stakeholders in one way or another in, in this crossroads business area that has not for decades seen any kind of significant development, but sees the prospect of the Purple Line coming along in a matter of years. And construction will be coming very soon, this year. So it's going to have a huge impact on the existing businesses. Some of them may be displaced. And it has, has a lot of potential good for spurring economic development, job growth, and tackling growth in our, in our property tax base, which is all, which is something that's very, very important to the future of our city. So this tour is a first step on a ladder. It's open to everybody who wants to come. It's a public event since it's outdoors. And so I want people to be aware of it. But if residents are unable to attend, not to fret because, as I said, this is going to be the beginning because, as I said, this is going to be the beginning of a continuum of public meetings of the stakeholders. And they will meet and convene and discuss the information that the stakeholders want to discuss, and to help plan the future of the crossroads for the next five, ten, twenty years. I think it's an exciting beginning to something that's long overdue. And I just want people to be aware of it. I want to thank Melanie Isis, the Executive Director of the Crossroads Development Authority, for her tremendous amount of labor that she's put into it and helping, helping me get this effort off the ground. So that's, I think that's about what I want to say tonight.
What's the date and time again?
The date is this Friday, which is April fifteenth. Also, it's Tax Day, I think, so that may be a date that's familiar to us.
So they can postpone it for a couple of days?
Yeah. You can postpone putting your taxes in the mail until the eighteenth, I think. From one o'clock till 3:00 p.m. We will convene at the seventy-six seventy-six Professional Building, which is across the street from the Starbucks. And we will end up at Sardi's Restaurant, where we will have some refreshments. People will be able to sit down and talk, and talk about what are the next steps. Thanks.
Thank you.
Yep, I'm done.
Councilmember Kovar.
Thank you. One of the things that the mayor mentioned in the upcoming schedule is the potential for looking at the B, Permit B, parking areas, yes. And I just want to appreciate, express my appreciation for that. I've talked with the city manager about it a bit, and I won't go into all the details of it, but it's one very unique sort of small type of parking park that seems to have run its course, and I'm hoping we can get it phased out. And we'll be talking about that when it goes further. I have mentioned a couple of times that there are issues with State Highway doing things on Piney Branch or Philadelphia Avenue sometimes. And I think I mentioned that a huge sign was put up in a residence yard, and we contacted the State Highway. Darrell Braithwaite was helpful on this. And it turned out it was just in the residence yard, so they came and they removed it. It never should have been there. So it's just sort of a small victory. But I think it points out the larger problem that we need to somehow get something more, in a way, protocols in place to help govern this kind of thing so that it doesn't happen. And, you know, the person still has to now plant some new things where, where it happened, too. So it's not without impact even once it's gone. And the last thing I just want to say, I appreciate the comments made earlier by Ellen Cassidy, who left now. But I do think the type of program that she outlined of a mix of housing for lower income, and in some cases, receiving subsidies from various sources along with market rate, is probably the way to go to ensure that the kind of range of housing opportunities that we talked about here a month or two ago when we had the community conversation on housing. I think what she described makes a lot of sense. So I just want to associate myself with her comments. Thanks.
Councilmember Kreshi.
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to just make a couple announcements. Tomorrow evening, as folks may recall, one of the first resolutions this council passed was a resolution welcoming Syrian refugees to Tacoma Park. And that was largely in response to national movements of xenophobia barring Syrian refugees based on baseless accusations, including by our own governor. As a result, it started quite a movement in Tacoma Park. A number of residents have been actively engaged in efforts in working with nonprofits and other local leaders in this area to identify a system by which we can prepare our community for potential placement of Syrian refugees. We've had one meeting, and now, long overdue, we have our second meeting scheduled for tomorrow evening here at the Community Center at 7:00 p.m. in the Hydrangea Room. In attendance will be, in addition to Councilmember Siemens, who's been working with some residents on identifying rental units within his ward, and also Councilmember Kovar. Will also be a gentleman named Ruben Chandra Saker, who's the Executive Director of the International Rescue Committee, to talk about their efforts in placing Syrian refugees in Tacoma Park, or more, but more generally in Maryland and the region. So for those who are interested, please come out. Friday morning, there is a coffee, Friday morning coffee at 8:00 a.m. where you can meet the mayor, myself, in the flesh, and Councilmember Kovar. Not just people on TV or the internet. So I, I ask people to come out. It should be a nice informal gathering. We're going to be at Capital Cheesecake, what is it?
Capital City.
Capital City Cheesecake. I've been there a thousand times, but I never get the name right. But eight o'clock, informal discussion, or no discussion at all, just to come out and meet your elected officials.
And Megan Murphy reminds people that parking is limited, so if you can walk, please walk.
Or ride your bike.
Yes, or ride your bike. Or stilts.
Another thing I just wanted to mention, as just a resident, forget being a city councilperson, I had a really good time this weekend attending a couple different events for Art Hop with my children, and I would, and on my own as well. So I just want to thank the community organizations, Main Street Tacoma, Historic Tacoma, and others who are actively involved in the effort, because it was really, really nice. And there was, you never, you don't realize so many cool things and so many talented people exist in our community until you do things like this, which are more geared towards the arts. So I just want to thank the folks who are involved in that. I raised this with the city manager already, but I want to do it for the record. And this is something that I think goes to what Councilmember Kovar said as well. I received a number of calls from residents on Walnut in Ward Three about receiving very short notice about WSSC, SSC's plans to come in in the next day or two to do some work, which has created a towaway zone in some of our city streets. That's obviously concerning, just in general. I think the discussion about creating a mechanism with our local utilities to notify us or the city so that we can dispatch information would be great. I recognize that there are instances where there are emergencies and nothing can be done. But in this instance, there's residents who are concerned because a few residents are out of town, their cars are there, they don't have access to their neighbor's keys, and they're concerned their cars are going to be towed. So I know you had a response to that about how that towing works. I was just hoping you could share that.
I, I don't know for certain.
Right.
The normal process, though, is that when these things happen, they don't tow them to, like, a lot somewhere further, far away. They go around a corner or onto the next block. So it can be very disconcerting when you return from vacation and your car is not where you thought you left it. But it, it's generally within a block or two of, of the place that it's been towed from. And we are going to follow up, and we'll follow up with the Public Works Director on that.
Thank you. That's all I have. I guess one thing I got to raise, because I have the mic. As somebody who grew up in Philadelphia, and as a Philadelphia sports fan, I would be remiss if I didn't say tomorrow night the Flyers are playing the Capitals in game one of the Stanley Cup playoffs, and I just want to say, "Go Flyers."
And you're now a Caps fan, no?
I know. Stay true to my roots. Thank you.
All right. Councilmember Smith.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. I have a number of things I want to mention. First, on May twentieth at 12:45, Washington Adventist University is hosting a groundbreaking for their new building on Maplewood. So the, everyone's going to gather at the Health Science Building. So if you need more information, please contact me, and I can give you the details. I'm glad we talked about stormwater, because I'm going to be hosting a panel in May on stormwater. Our, some of the other people that will be part of this discussion, Jake Cohen with PATH, that's People Acting Together in Howard and Ready Program, Susan Ecken, the Watershed Stewards Academy of Howard County, and Ben Alexandro, the Maryland League of Conservation Voters. This is to talk about stormwater. This came about because of a meeting here in Tacoma Park with the Chesapeake Bay Committee regarding the Flower Avenue Green Street Program. A lot of people in the region are paying attention to what we're doing. They think this is a really incredible program. And they want to copy and try to bring this into their, into their own municipalities, into their own regions. The fact that we are collaborating with the utilities before we've even started is unique for a lot of regions. The, the fact that we've gotten federal funding for it is, is special. So I'm going to talk to a number of people in May. This is being hosted by the Maryland League of Conservation Voters, and it's called the Choose Clean Water Annual Conference. So it should be televised on Facebook, their, their new feature. It's called Facebook Live, I think it is. So if you want to tune in, you can watch it, but it should be a really good program. Let me switch gears, and as many of you know, I'm on the Maryland Municipal League Legislative Committee. And we, we had our wrap-up today. There are two priorities for the committee this past General Assembly session. And I do not have good news. The first was highway user revenue. The committee tried to put together a couple pieces of legislation in the House and the Senate that would make sure we caught up to the amount of money that municipalities used to get before the economic downturn, and make sure going forward that we, that the governor and members of the Assembly could not just whimsically determine what they were going to give municipalities. Because highway user revenue is very important to all municipalities, not just in Montgomery County, but throughout the state. The, the House and the Senate could not reach an agreement. So we are going to get money FY seventeen. It's placed in the budget. It's nineteen million dollars. It's going to municipalities. But going forward, and this money is considered a grant, so that means that we got to go through this process again next year. So the one good thing coming out of this is there will be a work group set up. The members of the General Assembly are going to determine how they're going to give us back our money, which I just cannot understand. Because this money, you know, is supposed to go to the municipalities. There's already a formula set up that says how much we're supposed to get, but no one seems to want to follow it. Another priority for the league was program Open Space. We wanted to set up, like, a lockbox to make sure that the state funded the program, and they didn't, you know, put their hands in, into the, into the money and spend it on other things. That legislation didn't even come out of committee. So hopefully, next year, we're going to try again. It's very important for program Open Space, not just for us here at Tacoma Park, but throughout the state. Couple big bills did pass. There's a bill on law enforcement. I'm not going to go into all the details now, but it's HB 1016 and SB 1026. This talks about community policing. It's a very important bill, so if you get a chance, you should, should look at it in a subsequent council meeting. I'll go into more detail. So thank you very much, and I hope you guys tune in for the panel that I'm going to moderate on stormwater. It should be really good.
Sure. Thank you. Councilmember Siemens.
Thank you, Mayor. Last night, my wife Joyce and I participated in a meeting at the Essex House Apartments. It was a parent training meeting. And it was, was very well-run. It was, I thought, something that was very beneficial to the participants. This is a group that was organized by Denise Jones and Sarah Moosey, and it's in Councilmember Smith's ward. But they're experienced mothers who are, are trying to share some of their experiences with younger parents to help them to maybe overcome some of the obstacles and learn things a little quicker than they were able to learn in dealing with their children, and especially the school-aged children. So I just wanted to thank them for inviting us and congratulate them on the good work that they're doing. Thank you.
Thank you. I have a couple of updates. One, I just want to join with Councilmember Kreshi and talk about what a wonderful weekend Art Hop was. Got myself an early Mother's Day present, so it was terrific. I also was able to spend a little time at Washington Adventist University in the Sunday morning to help kick off Family Fun Day. And I think it was, the sun came out, it was a little chilly, but the sun came out, and I think everyone had a very good time. And then finally, I just want to thank Mr. Brown for raising the issue of WSSC. It was my understanding, having talked to Councilmember Reamer's staff, as well as staff from Jamie Raskin and Congressman Chris Van Hollen, that we were waiting on the DEP report and then going to have a meeting. But given your news, I will follow up immediately regarding that. I think that's it. Turn to the city manager for her comments.
Thank you. Speaking of program Open Space, our new playground and park improvements are underway at Colby Avenue Park. And program Open Space has funded most of the park improvements in Tacoma Park. It is a really important program. The work at Colby Avenue is expected to take up to eight weeks. We don't think it'll take that long, but, but that's the kind of outside date. I wanted to just give a Tacoma Junction update, because I'm trying to keep that going in a public way. We understand that representatives of the COOP and NDC have met at least twice in the past two weeks to continue discussions about continuity of operations during redevelopment of the site. So we're pleased that they're moving, at least having those discussions. A revised draft of the Development Agreement, which was amended based on council discussion at the closed sessions, has been submitted to NDC for further review and comment, as was the draft ground lease. Another council closed session will be scheduled once NDC has had an opportunity to respond to the documents. And we believe that, we should have that back in, in the next few weeks. We expect to receive a proposal from NDC this week regarding the community consultation process, which will be incorporated into the materials and discussed at the council's April 27th meeting. Also, just trying to make sure it's on your radar, the Montgomery County Green Fest to be held in this building on April 30th. It has quite a cast of people coming, quite a large number of events. I want to see the cars. Actually, a number of the things look really neat. But the featured guest speaker will be the EPA Administrator Gina McCarthy. But the highlight is the, we get to find out who the winner is of the Tacoma Park Neighborhood Energy Awards. And so we know a number of people have, actually worked really hard to be on those lists, and we'll find out which neighborhood will win. Just for council members, you were, I think, emailed a link to a survey on rating kind of community grant priorities, and I'd urge you to go ahead and weigh in on that. And just noted that I will be out of town a couple short times in May. That's it.
And do we have any update on the freestanding emergency room legislation? Or we'll wait on that? Okay.
I'm sorry.
No, 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 it's okay. I just, it's, it's only been a couple of days, and eight hundred and forty-some odd bills, twenty-six bills passed, so we can get that next week. Thank you. All right. So now we will move on to our first work session, which is further discussion and follow-up to the library renovation site visit that we had last week. And I know we have a number of materials here, so.
Yeah, get to the right place?
Mm-hmm.
Well, we were fortunate, even though it was quite greasy, it was nice to be able to go out and walk around the site with architect Greg Luke Meyer. I guess that was just last week. It feels like it was a really long time ago. And one of the things that was really helpful, I think, about that was that the actual, the concept designs' dimensions were shown by the yellow tape. And it was kind of surprising, I think, how, how little of an expe- Um, and it was, um, kind of surprising, I think, how, how little of an expansion it seemed for that. Um, and it was really good to see that. It was also helpful to, um, walk to some of the, uh, different places, um, that could be added on and other places around the building. And, um, I'm passing around just one of the, um, handouts that was, one of the pieces that was in your package with a couple little markings on it. Um, there, I think what we would really like to, I, I would like to get out of, um, a discussion this evening, is some direction on what to advise the architect about, about to do. He has come up with concept designs on the table. There has been some interest in a modified version of that concept design. And I would like direction from the council as what that modified version should be. Um, the couple things that I had heard about were, um, that the section that kind of is the indent on the Maple Avenue side over the police parking area, which I think is marked as, um, A on that little drawing, um, is something that a number of people were interested in seeing. How could that, would that be a useful expansion area, um, to provide some more, um, facility of library space utilized, for library space? The other thing, excuse me. The other thing that I heard from several people was an interest in taking up some of the area that's near the flagpole. Uh, because the, when the, um, tape was put out on the grounds, there was really quite a area that could be used. And so, I just identified that as Area B. It's not really clearly identified on any of the design options that had been previously prepared. So, I wanted to give that as an option. I think I'm gonna let you guys talk for a minute. I would like to hear what you have to say, and then I, um, I would like, uh, direction for the art content.
Sure, thank you. Councilmember Siemens?
Please, uh, Mr. Koreshi, you had his light on first, so let him go, if you'd like.
You can do Age Before Beauty if you'd like, come in.
Well, go ahead then.
Alright. Um, thank you, uh, Mayor and Councilmember Siemens and City Manager, and also to Mr. Lukemeyer. Because I will say that last week's, um, walkthrough really helped me personally. Because I know you all had the benefit, at least the last council did, of doing that. Um, you know, Mr. Williams, who was here earlier, I know he's left, he mentioned that, um, he wants the project to move forward, but there are some newcomers, I think I'm that person, who, uh, who wanted us to revisit this. And, um, I should state for the record that I want this to go forward. I believe very strongly in us renovating, and more importantly, expanding our library. Uh, but expanding in such a way that we don't have to revisit it in another five years as our population grows even more. Um, that's why I wanted to see other concepts, to see if we can adopt not only what Mr. Lukemeyer's initially, which I think we call number seven on our chart here, um, as the renovate and expand proposed concept, but what other options are available. And Ms. Ludlow's recommendations or inquiry, I should say, with respect to her map that includes A and B, is something that I've been thinking a lot about since then. So, with that being said, um, I know that there are some hard feelings about this issue. I don't know if it's on the council, but within the community, but my discussions with Mr. Lukemeyer, and in addition to having, I should just state for the record, this walkthrough last week, Councilmember Kovar, Councilmember Schultz, and I had an opportunity to sit down with the City Manager and Mr. Lukemeyer at length to talk about these different concept designs, so we could get up to speed about what is available to us in terms of concepts. Taking in the, in, the interest that's most relevant to me, which is expanding our library in such a way where we're thinking to the future, um, my recommendation is that, based on what Mr. Lukemeyer said and what I heard in the meeting, I think we need to build out through the mosaic wall. I, I think that the mosaic wall, from my understanding, is something that can be taken apart and reassembled, um, based on what Mr. Lukemeyer said. Um, and that's one point I'd like to make. Um, and then two, I really believe strongly in building out over the, the deck, um, on the police, uh, parking lot area, which I believe is drawing number ten in our design options.
That's right.
Um, and I also believe very strongly in building out number eleven, which is the atrium area on the opposite side, on the, um, on the parking lot side of.
Right, and, and I just wanna clarify, it, it's not really clear within the, it's like kind of misleading in, in one of the tables, but the number seven does also include that courtyard area.
Oh, it does, okay, then forget, forget what I just said. With that being said, I believe that the concept design as it currently exists, um, seven doesn't build out enough. And I know that there's valid concerns about maintaining the green space on the Philadelphia Avenue side. And I share that concern, but I think we can do a modest build-out on that side if we're willing to revisit the mosaic wall, and if we're willing to build out from it and maintain it in such a way where it can be part of any future construction on that side. That's why I think, um, because I really believe the reading rooms, the adult reading room and the children's reading room on that side is where there's room that's needed. I think the parking deck facility, I, I think I talked to a few of my colleagues about this. The, the, the idea of having a reading room that's glass on all sides, where people can go in there and actually enjoy their reading and, and, uh, feel like they're outside, but not outside, I think would be a really good feel. And I think it's also about building up what I think the library director and others talked about, which is a real need for, um, I forget what the name is, it's not young readers, but junior readers.
The young adults.
Yeah, young adults, because I think there's a need for that. Uh, because there's all age groups that come by the library, and there needs to be a place for all of them. So, I, I really like the concept design in eight. I know in terms of square footage, um, it doesn't necessarily jive, um, with seven, because seven talks about more square footage. But I think eight allows us to build more out on the Philadelphia Avenue side. But I also think we should think about, uh, constructing over the police parking lot area, which adds quite a bit of square footage for not a lot of cost, relatively speaking. Um, and I, I, I'll tell you, when we had this meeting a, a couple months ago, one thing that I talked about is why are we not building a second story? But I will say that after he, hearing the numbers, after talking to the, to the, uh, the architect, to hearing from you, Ms. Ludlow, and the library director about what the long-term cost of that is with staff and space, I think that it's not the right move. Um, so I've, I had big, big thoughts, and I've kind of brought them back, I'm back here on planet Earth. But I think that, uh, we should consider moving out past the mosaic wall and, and see if we can find a way to keep it. But just build out in that direction, so that's all I have to say about that.
Councilmember Koreshi, if I could ask for clarification. So, just so it's easier for every, would you say then you would move forward with what the City Manager has passed out, plus wanting to bump out the mosaic wall?
Right.
Is that, I just wanna make sure, because you didn't speak on this, the sort of B area.
Well, I feel like, that's why I was looking at eight, I feel like eight sort of builds out here.
Kind of does that.
Does that.
That's why, I mean, I know it doesn't, it doesn't build out at a, at a straight line, sort of like the City Manager does, but it comes out at an angle. But I think that's the whole idea, I think.
So, it's better to say you, you're preferring eight plus ten?
Exactly.
And I, I, my voice was kind of messed up earlier, but I did wanna clarify that where I put A and B are more just kind of, I don't, like, locations. The, the, the actual configuration and the dimension of that, I think, I would prefer, if that, something like that goes forward to Mr. Lukemeyer, that he play around with it a little bit about what looks best as a, from an architectural point of view, what works best. And I just wanted to show some places on the map.
And I, and I will note that the di, design as it currently exists and the build-out just inside the hallway there, by the roof that, or the, by the, the deck overlooking the police department. Um, I really like the concept of the, you know, the, the openness where you can look from the main desk into the library, which I think is very important too, so, that's all, thank you.
Councilmember Siemens?
Thank you, Mayor, and, uh, thank you, Mr. Koreshi. I, uh, you'll see the wisdom of my allowing you to go first. I basically agree with, uh, Councilmember Koreshi. Uh, I, uh, only thing I'll expand on that is that the, um, the distance out, uh, we wanna preserve the trees along Philadelphia Avenue, and yet we want to move out in that direction as much as we can without, uh, impeding on those trees. But I agree, it's, uh, basically a number eight with number ten. That's all, thank you.
Can I just ask the City Manager, does eight include the piece?
It does not include the courtyard, but I, I think everybody wants the courtyard as far as I've been able to determine.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure we're clear on that too.
Councilmember Siemens, is that something?
Yes.
You want the courtyard too, okay.
Right.
So, it's, it's, so far I've heard eight and ten with courtyard, okay.
So, can't we just say eight, ten, eleven?
Yes, thank you. Thank you. Councilmember Kovar?
Thank you. Um, I wanna say, first of all, that, um, Councilmember Koreshi and, and I and Councilmember Schultz did have a really great session, and I think that combined with the on-the-ground tour we had the other day really made a difference. And I think I'm mostly in the same place, um, they were. I agree, number one, that the second story isn't worth the effort once you put in elevators and bathrooms and stairs and the extra columns needed to support it because of the requirements for libraries and the staff up there, you just don't really get much out of that. So, I would, I would rule that out. Um, if it's the case that seven and eleven are, are sort of, or eleven's included within seven, which is within the current, um, proposed design, then, then I think that's fine, uh, either of those two. Um, so I think then we do get to, um, the three pieces, uh, on the right of, of the drawing here. I do agree with the idea of filling in the, the area above the police, um, place, uh, the police, uh, parking place. Um, as for the, the bump-out on the mosaic, I, I think that's, that does make sense along with B. I think B, and I understand that that was only drawn to kind of represent a general idea. I might sort of favor B-plus, because, uh, when we were standing there, it really seemed like there was a lot of room. And I know that the mayor is rightly concerned about the space where the kids play and so on, and we ought to try to preserve that. But if B continued along to the left, maybe even in a, a curve heading toward the parking lot, it struck me that there was more space there. So, I, I would, I think I would leave it up to the architect a little bit to figure out how you combine the move out toward the mosaic and the sweep along B. The one thing I would say is that eight, that sort of jagged series of, of things, to me, I would move toward a smoother
I agree.
approach. What's, what I don't like about the current facade along Eastern is that there's this big cut in, I mean, along Philadelphia, a big cutting which doesn't sort of match what you have on Philadelphia. And I think smoothing that out in some way, um, would be better. So, I guess that makes me in the same general category as my colleague, but maybe in the B-plus category, if not A-minus, so. Uh, and i- if we can get the architect to maybe, um, toss together some options of what he could do with that additional space, I think that would be great.
Councilmember Smith?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I would like to go with, um, seven and eleven.
Yeah, eleven's included already in seven.
In seven, okay, good.
Yeah.
Um, because number ten, I don't think it's worth the additional a hundred and fifty dollars a square foot for two, two thousand one hundred and forty square feet is basically the same amount that you're gonna get in, uh, the other option. Uh, the other thing is that these square foot, um, quotes that we're getting are just for the bare bones of construction.
Yeah.
So, I mean, this is gonna be maybe twenty, thirty, forty percent more than what we're being quoted now. So, I think we, for me, overall, I would like to stay within a four, four-point-one-million-dollar total cost of this library, addition, or renovation redevelopment, rather than, uh, exceeding that price tag. I mean, we do need to also consider the fact that there was a brand-new library constructed less than a mile away from here in Silver Spring. Yes, I know it is separate, a separate library, it's under the county system, but residents do use it. So, I don't think we should spend, uh, more than four million dollars on this library project.
So, you're with seven?
Yes, seven.
Councilmember Schultz?
I'm basically in the same camp as Councilmember Smith. Uh, and let me explain my reasons. Um, couple. We've got, in addition to the library, a whole lineup of additional projects, capital improvement projects to buildings that are, that the city has. Uh, one of which is, of course, is building out the, um, lower atrium where the police department lobby is to provide much, much-needed, uh, additional space and breathing room, um, for the police. Uh, and it would close, or close, close in the floor, on the first floor, so that that main, main lobby is, uh, can be used, rather than just be a whole, uh, looking down into the police lobby where there's nothing to look at. Um, we've got, uh, other improvements to ma, made in the community center. We wa, we need to, uh, renovate the, the Hefner Building. Uh, these are, this is not a significant cost. The Public Works Yard, uh, is, ren, uh, renovation also has some additional costs that need to be taken care of, uh, in the out-years. And most importantly of all, particularly in my ward, we're looking at the probable replacement of the city's recreation center. I mean, when you look at the total available indoor recreation space in the city of Tacoma Park that's accessible to our residents, it's just about nil. The rec center, uh, and a, and a couple rooms in the community center, uh, that, that, that's about it. And, and, um, we're, we're, we're hanging on by the skin of our teeth with the indoor swimming pool that we've got at Piney Branch Elementary, which ultimately is doomed, uh, because.
Just, just, we, we don't have it, but.
Yeah, but I mean, what I mean is, is that we're in the position possibly of losing that, and we're going to be need, needing, for me at least, wanting to think about, uh, building a proper swimming pool somewhere in the city that we have some control over. Um, and the, the more money we spend on the library, notwithstanding that we will bond the, the financing out perhaps over twenty years, so that, uh, you know, which is the proper thing to do. Uh, every dollar we put on the library's debt service is one less dollar of debt service we can carry for the recreation center and the other stuff that, that, that is also equally urgent. I mean, it's, the rec center is not less urgent than the library, it just happens to be second in line. Um, and there's, it's a, a lot of people who are very, are very dependent on that, on recreation programs. And so, you know, who, what is not to like about building over the police lot and, and pushing out through the mosaic wall and having a larger library? I mean, I, I, I love the library. As somebody said here in testimony about a month ago, the library is, in some ways, represents the soul of our city. Because, and it is, and as somebody else said this, uh, uh, here at the podium, uh, it's, it's, it's a library that is, there's nothing else like it, and exceeds way beyond what most libraries even dream of being able to do. Um, so, I guess there's, I mean, if you had to do a poll, I'm sure you're gonna find the vast majority of Tacoma Park residents saying, yeah, we really want the best possible library we can have. But I am also these days catching a lot of flack from Ward Six residents who are really upset about the increased assessments and the fact that their taxes are going to be going up, their property taxes are going to be going up. Uh, we're gonna be raising the property taxes, uh, possibly, and we know for sure that the Montgomery County is determined that that's what they're going to do. And at some point in time, we have to, I have to, respect, respect those, those, those wishes. I, I, it affects. It affects me too, as, as, as a homeowner on a fixed, fixed income. So that's, it has a real effect on me, just as much as it does on many other people in the city. So I think at some point, we have to sort of say to some of these library additions, well, it would be nice. But how much does it cost? And for example, you know, building over the police lot, that empty space out there seems on the surface to make all, seems to be a very logical thing to do from a design point of view. But it costs, it adds another million dollars to the cost of the construction of the library, for which we get to a little over about 2,100 square feet of additional space. That just seems like a terrific premium to pay. And then if, if we construct an addition in the courtyard, I'm sorry, what is it? The, the push-out of the wall, the mosaic, I had the number here somewhere. Where is the one with regard to the?
I'm not sure there's one just at the push-out for the mosaic. But I think Councilmembers Schultz, so you're with Councilmember Smith on number seven?
Yeah, I am, basically, that's it, thank you.
Great, thank you. Last one to go. I will say thank you very much to the city manager for putting together the handout to give us this evening. I would just say in terms of looking at the different design options and thinking back to our council priorities, you know, we've all said that we are putting a priority particularly on youth programs, particularly to help in youth who are, may not have all the opportunities or advantages in our community. Our library absolutely serves that population. In particular, being able to expand the space for young adults is very important. That's something that young adults who right now use our recreation services have said they would like more area to themselves in the library. So I see A, not only building over the police department as not only adding to the functionality and flow as we saw it last week. To me, that's almost a no-brainer in terms of just how much that increases the use, not only of the library, but the community center. But it also opens up the possibility of having additional space for young adults. I also like the addition of B, however that might be conceptualized. I'm not sure I'm with my colleagues though, who were with eight, 10, and 11. I'm less convinced of the need to bump out the mosaic wall, but I am willing to entertain that for the moment and see what the architect brings back to us. I just visually, as he was showing it to us last week, I'm, I'm not seeing that bumping out then with A and B and all of that. But if the architect comes back with something that looks good, I think that'd be good.
I think I've gotten some pretty good information to share with the architect to bring one or two kind of versions of that back with some cost, with those cost estimates. Because I think that is something a very crucial part to look at the, the different options, so.
Great.
Is that good?
Yep, anyone else have any other comments? No?
Thank you very much, thanks.
All right. And we will move on to our second work session, which is an update on Flower Avenue. And I just want to actually ask the city manager, given that we were going to do the franchise agreement, but I see that we have, do we want to switch order?
No, let's do Flower Avenue, because Flower Avenue I think actually is quick.
Okay.
Let me, let me just tell you what it is. I mean, we, we did have...
I just, when we have people here, I just want to...
Appreciate our attorney was able to get from her other meeting.
Thank you.
We did go through a lot of the detail of the Flower Avenue project at the budget work session on capital projects. So I don't think I need to go through much of the background. Kind of the, the cutting to the chase on this item is under the fiscal impact. And that is that we had had, we have a design contract with, with RK&amp;K. They need to be able to finalize the designs. We have the money in the FY16 budget, but we don't have the, we need to expand the contract. We need to extend the contract to do this next phase. There is more work that needed to be done in the design work because of some changes with, that were related to the Washington Gas and Washington, and WSSC work. There was also some problems with the surveying that was done originally, that then they had to get redone and change their plans. The survey company did make the changes, but it's one of those things that it did slow down the design. So I'm happy to go through the details of the project. I've got it here in the text so that it's on the record. But I would just more like to open it up to any questions that you might have about just approving an extension to the contract to finalize the design.
And can you just tell us where we are at in design percentage-wise?
I think we're at the 90% and we get to a little more than 90, almost 100% by this contract. And then it would go into preparing the bid documents.
And once we hit 100%, how long would it take for us to go out to bid?
I'd put that on my information for Monday. It takes several months to get that done, and then it takes several months. The, the time, there's actually a time lag. We have to make sure we get our agreements with Washington and Venice University. All of them, the, all of the easement agreements and the design work then goes to State Highway for approval because their money's involved in it, to the grant funders to make sure that they see that everything has been done so that then we get the go-ahead to go out to bid. So, so the, there's probably a six-month review time during FY17, then I can go out to bid. We're not expecting actual construction until the beginning of FY18.
And just in case, we might have a delay with the Carroll Avenue Bridge, which
Right.
might delay this project. How long, once we go out to bid for our construction services, how long are those bids good?
I can't tell you that, but one of the things that we have always said in going out to bid and in working with a contractor that we would get, is that we would start on one end of the project so as to not impact the Carroll Avenue detour route. So it's a mile-long project, there's lots of work to be done. I don't know that it would have a problem in that, in that aspect.
I just want to make sure we cover everything.
Right, we're certainly working on that very carefully.
Good, thank you.
Anyone have any other questions about this? No, I don't think there are any questions. I would just say that I was also with Councilmember Smith when Ms. Breithwaite did her presentation. And it just, it looks like a terrific project, and I'm glad we're moving it forward.
Okay, so we'll come back then with the resolute, I guess, ordinance to authorize the extension of the contract.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
What will that amount to, that additional cost?
I'm sorry?
That additional expense, what are we talking?
It's, we have the design, the design money's in the budget. It's just that it's not been allocated for this contract.
Okay, so we're not...
We're not adding, we're not adding, it's not a budget.
It's not new money.
Right, this is not new money now.
Ah, okay.
Ms. Ferguson, if you'd like, you can come and sit up on the dais. For our discussion tonight on the Comcast franchise agreement, et cetera, Sue Ellen Ferguson, who's our attorney to deal with cable matters, is here. And we have quite a lot to go through. We have, the Comcast franchise has been approved by the county. The RCN franchise has now, has been negotiated with, by the county staff and will be going to the county council for a public hearing May 3rd, I think. So it's, it's moving forward. And Verizon's a little ways away, but. Ms. Ferguson, do you want to jump right in and, and tell us why we have franchise agreements? And what, what our process is here?
It's because the federal law makes you have one. Mainly it. And in return, you get the ability to have a franchise fee and a PEG grant. And so, the Comcast franchise actually expired, what, a couple of years ago now?
Yeah, 2013.
But the county has been negotiating with Comcast, and they have been slow to close the deal, I will have to say. And that's not just in Montgomery, that's in other jurisdictions close by. But there is a deal now that the county executive has supported and the county council has adopted. And because of your adoption of Chapter 8A of the county code, the county also negotiated on your behalf and the other municipalities in the county except for one. So the, that has been completed. And it's now up to the city to adopt the franchise agreement. And, and there's a lot of legislative actions you have to take with this. One is the franchise agreement for Comcast, which you should do by ordinance. And then this, the other action that you will need to take is to review and approve the agreement between the county and yourselves as to how the franchise will be administered during the course of the Comcast agreement. You currently have a franchise agreement with Verizon that will last another six years. This Comcast franchise is written to co-terminate. So within another three years,
We have to start again.
you'll have the opportunity to start all over again on this process and to take on both of them at the same time. Because they start the negotiations 36 months prior to the ending of the franchise agreement. So that's something to look forward to.
Yes. Thank you.
Don't know, you know, it's, it's, we'll see, you know. But in any event, so as all these conversations were going forward, you know that we have talked about the fact previously that the way you receive the PEG grants is in capital. And I've been asked to explain why that's so. And that is because 47 U.S.C. 452-G in the U.S. Code requires it again, that any PEG grants that you receive must be used for capital. And as you also know, you have much more of an operating budget cost for running your excellent cable channel than you do capital. And so you've got some money in the bank for capital, but nothing in the bank for operating. Part of what was discussed with the county over the last number of months was changing that dynamic. And so they have been able to negotiate some flexibility with Comcast with respect to what can be used for operating and what can be used for capital. And then the county has further offered to Tacoma Park and the other municipalities the ability for the payment of, in essence, a premium, that all the funds that you will receive under the PEG grant from Comcast will be used, usable for operating as well as capital. So that will give you now, for the next six years, you know, based on, of course, cable services that are purchased from Comcast, I don't know what the subscriber base is, but that will give you a fairly reliable stream for operating funds to continue to operate your franchise, your cable channel and the other things that you do that require operating funds with cable.
Could you describe the screening?
It is, there, you were provided with previously a copy of the proposal by the county, and that is specifically listed there. And it's reflected in the agreement you are being asked to sign as more of a percentage of the, the grant as opposed to a number. But there has been a, a number given to you, based on current numbers.
If you look in the council packet on the front page, I think it's the fourth paragraph down, currently we received $124,000 in cable operating funds and $930,000 in cable capital. That's in addition to our franchise fee of 270 or so thousand dollars. The, the new arrangement would allow us to have $458,000 in cable operating and just $217,000 in cable capital. That actually, if you look at how much we spend on cable stuff, for capital stuff, we almost never spend up to $217,000 in a year on cable capital. And so, and we do have about 3.3 million in the bank for use just for capital spends. So the opportunity here is to get quite a lot more of operating funds that we can use to pay for staff and reusable equipment and that kind of thing.
Ms. Ferguson, what is the history behind restricting these funds? Why, I mean, why does the federal government care if we use it for capital, if we use it for operating? And has anyone challenged it legally?
No, because it's fairly clear from reading the code what's required. And the, the penalty is, under the federal law, you are not allowed to charge more than a 5% franchise fee. You can charge less, but not more. You are also allowed to have the Comcast make provision for your government, educational, and public needs, and that's the PEG grant, that's where the PEG comes from. And that can only be used for that, and it specifically says in the code that it can only be used for capital costs. So that's the problem. It's been there for quite some time, it's been there since the first Comcast agreement. So I don't think it's going anywhere. And any changes would be very difficult to generally adjust through the actual rules of your town. So that's, that's why it's done that way. And what's happened here is, the county's been able to negotiate more flexibility. So the first 1% of the 3% that you get, in any event, you could use for operating. But the premium that I spoke about is where the county has also made an offer to cover what they call the match. Because after the first 1%, you would have to match dollar for dollar. And in any funds that you wanted to use for operating with capital expenditures, or some, something from your general fund, the county has offered instead to make the match for you. They can use as much operating money as they can get.
No, capital money.
I'm sorry.
The county can use as much as capital.
Capital funds as they can get because they have the FiberNet there continually building, and they can always use those funds, whereas you cannot. You really don't have it used for them, and you have them stockpiled if, if you do.
The, you know, there are a couple of things that I'm actually looking at some of that money that's in our bank account for. As we look forward to both library and police department changes, there are wiring-related activities. There's some digital display areas, there's some things that, you know, we may be very creative about how we designate areas to make the best use of some of those funds to help offset the costs of both projects.
And we, and we have talked about that. Most of the jurisdictions are very interested in how many different ways they could use the funds that they already have. And the, the current wording does say that you may use funds both for the, for cable-related costs, but also for FiberNet-related costs, institutional network costs. And so if you expand your network, you may use it for that. Computers, they specifically reference computers and capacity and dark fiber and similar expenses for an institutional network. So you would be able to use your capital monies for that. We've also talked about other types of things such as security cameras that tie into FiberNet so that you can share that security information with other police departments. There's a number of ways to use these funds going forward, it's not just for studio equipment. But you will have a lot more flexibility and reliability under this agreement with the county in the funding that you're going to get.
And if we, if we opted to take this money, be able to use it for operating costs, that that's part of the contract then, and we couldn't change our mind in out years?
You can use it for either type of cost.
Okay, but we're paying a premium to be able to use it as the operating money?
Yes, you are. We haven't, you know, we haven't discussed that with them particularly, I don't know what their response would be. They are making this arrangement based on certain assumptions. And those assumptions include the fact that currently, a certain number of municipalities are entering into this version of the deal with them.
Right.
They, they have offered... They, they have offered a couple of different options. Um, and, you know, I think that they would be open to revisiting part of that. But they're, they are certainly interested in the capital funds.
Right. It just, it, it seems like a good idea right now, but, uh, we don't know what happens, you know, several years from now.
Well, we start renegotiating in three. But you're right. I, I, we look really carefully, you know, how, does that lock us into something, a bad deal?
Because it is a large premium.
It is.
Yeah, I, I think you're right about that. They were flexible and when we were talking about it, because we had various options to talk about. And, uh, everyone except for Rockville went with this option B. Um, and Rockville went separately because Rockville has a large need for capital. And so, they got a better deal by just taking their pro rata share of the Comcast PEG and keeping to the Verizon deal. But that's, they're pretty unique about that. So, for them, it made sense.
I was wondering if you can, if, if we can move on just a little bit to what the Comcast franchise calls for and what the process is that, that, um, we go for, oh, I'm sorry.
Go back to one other question.
Okay.
Can you just clarify, so with the capital funding, is that only available for, specifically for some municipal government purpose? Because, you know, one of the things that I'm interested in anyway, I don't know if others are, is what can be done to expand connections for less well-off people in the community who maybe don't have electronic digital access of one kind or another. And it sounded like when we talked about this earlier, that that was not a valid use, but it was a little vague. So, maybe you can.
If you're talking about paying for internet connections for individuals, that would not be included in this.
What about?
But what if it's like a program that we do? So, it's to help them connect to our new library or to the city services and so on?
The institutional networks that are being discussed are ones that connect government to government, generally speaking. They are not run to private houses. So, you know, I, I hope I'm not missing what you're asking me, but it is supposed to be, uh, the focus originally was the public, educational and government, and that really was focused on cable channels that were supported by PEG funds, which was the government channel. And then also, um, public channels where programming could be, uh, cable cast. That was the original focus. The institutional networks came along and became important, uh, to the governments. And so, those were supported also, but also what happened at the same time was the internet. And that is not included in these services. That the internet is a separate part of the market and the, the cable franchises, even though they bundle services and even though you're, you, it looks like they're the same thing. They're not. They're regulated separately. So, um, generally speaking, providing individual access is not gonna be something that you'll be able to do with PEG funds.
Right, but it could be, you know, access from a given apartment building in a common area or whatever. I mean, it just, it just seems sort of.
It would have to be, it would have to be a adjunct library facility in the li- in that. I mean, it has to be a government or educational center. It, it's, it's one of these things where.
A citywide wifi.
And, and we cannot do that. I, I would love to do that, uh, but I mean, one of the reasons if you, if you go, the, one of the reasons we're looking at expanding the library is all the people that bring their computers there to use the wifi. And so, as we talk about these spaces, I mean, part of that is to accommodate those, those folks.
I guess, I mean, we're just talking about these large amounts of funds that we're never gonna spend, apparently.
I'm gonna try.
Can't, but, and then we have this need that's kind of related to it. It just seems.
But it seems interesting, Ms. Ferguson, you said that computers could be covered.
Yes.
Under this.
Computers to access the fiber net.
Right.
Yes, so, by the government, but the fiber net isn't accessed by individuals.
Mm-hmm, right.
But if with the schools, we provided, you know, a homework channel, I mean, is that?
Um, uh, if you're providing a channel that's a government purpose channel, certainly.
But not what you're, not what you're talking about. I mean, unfortunately, there's the, you had sent around the information that, that Cox has. Comcast has also a very low-cost wifi access for, um, for lower-income families. Um, so there are those kinds of things, but I think, um, everything that, you know, there's a couple of communities across the country that were some exceptions because they weren't able to otherwise get service. So, they were allowed to do wifi. We have, we're just not in that category. We've got three companies that serve this area. Um, and so, we don't have that option. We have to make sure that we're providing it and trying to do a good job here. I think there's some creative things. I know, uh, the deputy city manager's had, you could give away the hotspot things out of the library. Check it out. I think that's a neat idea. I think there's some, some things that, that could be done, but they can't come out of these funds.
You know, Ms. Ferguson, could we ask Verizon, cause that's the next carrier that we have to negotiate with, to provide some type of free wifi for residents? I mean, is that something we could put on the table and they would say, oh, that's crazy? I mean, is that a negotiable?
Believe, believe me, many communities have asked that very same question. Who have been negotiating franchise agreements in the last number of years. And the answer has consistently, from all the carriers, been no.
Wow.
They, they will not, they will not combine the two. They are very interested in keeping internet and cable separate because they are not having to pay a franchise fee.
For the internet.
On the internet services. So, they, they, those twains aren't gonna meet if they can help it.
Okay. Well, why don't we move on? Cause I think we could probably sit here and ask you.
Yeah.
What if we did this? All night long?
And we could do that offline, actually.
Exactly. We'll try, we'll try to be as creative as we can. So, a couple of things, um, we do have coming up on our agendas soon, um, the agreement to, for the Comcast franchise. So, the, can the city in, in reviewing, you know, we've, we've got the, it's a, I think, a pretty good agreement that the county has negotiated with Comcast. They improved the number of their consumer services as part of the agreement. We did get this flexibility on funds, which was a big deal. The, um, there were some side notes. There was a settlement agreement that came also with the franchise agreement with the county. The county gets some funds. They're willing, I think, to pay for the, our attorney and the municipal attorneys that went in on this project, uh, which will be very useful. But we had, when we testified before the, the county executive's public hearing on Comcast, uh, we made a couple of statements that we wanted to have them deal with the utility wires in a better way. That we wanted to have a phone number that somebody who doesn't, isn't a subscriber could call and complain that the Comcast wire is down across their lawn. Is there a way that we can add those kinds of things on from the city's discussion with Comcast or approving of this agreement? Or are we stuck with just the terms that the county has negotiated?
You know, franchise agreements always recognize that there are police powers that you retain, uh, outside of the franchise agreement. And, um, I don't know of any agreement that has the kinds of requirements that you just mentioned. They're not in this franchise agreement. You know, I'm not, th- this isn't what I do, uh, uh, all the time. I'm a municipal lawyer, but I don't know of any franchise agreements that include those provisions. Uh, sometimes just asking will get you, uh, where you wanna go. For one thing, you should have, and I, I imagine that you do, an expedited number. So, if somebody from the city's calling in about a cable-related issue.
Actually, we don't. We know people, so we call them.
Right.
But it's only from our public works folks being out on the street and getting somebody's number. It has nothing to do with even a, an expedited number.
Well, and that's not a requirement. These are things that, in, in working together over the years, municipalities have learned to get from these franchises so that they can get to where they need to go. And you promise you're not gonna share that number because it can't become a public number. But it's the one where they know if you're calling, you've tried other things and the person who's coming to you really needs some help. So, those are the kinds of relationships that, um, are good to foster. And, um, they'll also, of course, as you know, I'm sure they've done it already, shown your public works how to figure out which one is, which wire is theirs.
Right.
Um, getting non-subscribers better information other than through you is a hard sell. I, I don't know of any provisions in any agreements about that. So, and, and so, it ends up being here as, uh, I'm sure as well as elsewhere. Public Works figures out with the company which wires are the ones. And they're the ones, the lower level.
Okay, so, um, the count, the county has approved the Comcast agreement. It was effective for the county on April first. At some point relatively soon is coming up on the agenda for us to approve. Everything that I can see about the agreement, I think is, I would recommend that the council approve it. In addition to that, we have then two agreements now that we would sign with the county. And can you describe what those agreements would include?
I had started off about that a little earlier. Those would be adopted by resolution. They're contracts with the county as to how they will administer on both of the franchise agreements on your behalf. You've, you currently have an active agreement about the Verizon franchise. But the county has wanted to renegotiate that one along with the negotiation of this new Comcast agreement to work out the numbers about the, uh, primarily to work out the numbers about the operating versus capital. And so, that's why you'd be at, being asked to do a new agreement for a period of six years on the Comcast. And then, uh, an amended agreement with Verizon, about the, not with Verizon, with the county, about the Verizon agreement. To put into effect mainly what we've talked about. Otherwise, they'd be doing the same things for you that they're doing for you now.
And the, um, these agreements, besides dealing with the money, also, um, show what the county does then on our behalf in terms of customer service complaints about, so we don't get the calls when people are upset about their cable service. Um, the county handles that. The kind of management of these lines and our, how our cable TV signal goes through uh, and gets broadcast through the county. One of the things that was an interesting discussion piece was that part of the reason, and, and a certain amount of money goes to the county for those services. They have a fairly large staff. They go out and inspect when, uh, Comcast is digging in a, in an area to make sure the work is done correctly, all those kinds of things that we don't do. But one of the things that part of that money has traditionally been expected to do is also for them to negotiate on our behalf because they have to contract with a much more expensive attorney that specializes in telecommunication law, um, that works with the county on these, on these, uh, agreements. And we had a very interesting discussion back and forth with the county's attorney who didn't wanna put that language into the agreements. That felt that it was inappropriate to put those, that language into the agreements.
Where was the language supposed to go?
I'm sorry?
Where was the language?
Well, he felt that it wasn't appropriate, that he wasn't going to bind a future county council and county executive to negotiate, negotiating these agreements on our behalf. And we said, well, part of the reason we would be paying the county money is to negotiate that on our behalf, and they've always done it before. And their cable staff said, well, of course, we're gonna do that. Even, you know, uh, high officials in the county executive's office said, well, yeah, we're gonna do that. But at, at this point, that language actually isn't in the agreements. Is that correct?
It is in the agreement, but only from the municipal side. What the agreement, and, and we are informed by the county attorney, that's as far as he can go. The, these are the agreements with the county about the administration of the franchise. And on the municipal side, it says, we, that, that municipalities want the county to administer, which specifically includes negotiation of the franchise agreement and administration of that, uh, agreement. And, and you know how in agreements, if, the, both parties say what they want. And so, in Tacoma Parks, it says Tacoma Park wants that. On the county side, it says the county is agreeing to administer the franchise agreement for you without the specific language concerning the renegotiation in three years. The, this is a point of law that's being pressed. They're not moving. However, this is not a change from language in the past. It's not as if the word negotiation of the franchise agreement were taken out. The prior agreements just mentioned administering the franchise. And there's other wording in there that's staying in, such as a little later on in the agreement where it references the fact that the county is not allowed to, um, enter into a new franchise agreement on the city's behalf without its approval. So, that wording has always been there and it's stayed there. So, I think that everyone has understood this wording to mean this in the past. It was unfortunate that it came up in quite this way and that it became so front and center. But we had the answer. And while legally speaking, there, the office of law does not believe that the commitment can be made for another administration in the future to negotiate on your behalf for the franchise. There is no indication in the, in the executive that they don't intend to do just that for you.
One of the things that we were discussing is that as part of the resolutions to adopt these, to enter into these agreements, that we put in a whereas clause that kind of reinforces that we are expecting that this, um, includes negotiation, future, future negotiations of, uh, cable agreements. As a, as a leverage, uh, for whoever might be the next county executive um, to show that that's, that that's our understanding and that's the intention that we've always had, um, uh, through this process.
It also makes a lot of sense that everyone works together.
Right.
Cause it reduces costs for everyone. And, you know, it, it is the sensible thing to do. We don't know why they would not continue to do that. That's what they've done for, they did that for Verizon under the same kind of wording in agreements and, um, the second time for Comcast.
So, you imagine, um, when we discussed this the other day, we discussed the resolution, we also discussed the possibility of getting a letter from the county executive's office that just sort of stated that, no, okay.
We'll do what.
We can, okay.
We can.
Just wanted to check on that.
The, um, so coming before you will be the Comcast franchise agreement. Um, the resolutions that would, um, basically allow me to enter into these two MOUs with the county. One for the Verizon funds, one for the Comcast funds. Um, and then, uh, relatively soon after that, we'll be going through, uh, we'll see the RCN franchise agreement. That one is a particularly nice agreement for the city. It has a lot of things that they are giving us. Uh, we are the only municipality, I think, that has any RCN, uh, fiber.
I think there's one small municipality that has a very few, but you're the one that has the bulk of it.
So, for that reason, if you read the agreement, there's all these references to Tacoma Park. And we get different kinds of, uh, services from that. Um, I don't think we would end up having any, we, they would not have an agreement with the county on, with RC, about RCN though. Cause I don't think we have one now.
You know, I'm not as familiar with that because you are the only.
Right.
Municipality.
But we get a certain amount of the money that come from the subscribers of RCN and Tacoma Park. And so, um, you know, that would continue as part of the agreement. Um, I think we get a total of five thousand dollars a year, um, out of that agreement. Yeah?
If RCN is so cooperative and lucrative, let's say, why wouldn't it be in our selfish interest to endorse RCN as our recommended cable company for residents of the city of Tacoma Park? I mean, why not be, uh, open and forthright about it?
It is the most affordable.
I, I mean, I, I don't know what the, how we identify those things, but I, I'm absolutely, um, I certainly can describe what the benefits are of the agreement, uh, when we get to that point. And, and show that it is very, it's very good for us. The, you know, the thing, the money that comes to us, um, is primarily from Verizon. That's, that's just by far been the, the area where the money comes to the city of Tacoma Park. Comcast has a relatively small amount. Nevertheless, because of the terms of the franchise agreement, it allows us flexibility of using the Verizon money essentially in a different way. And, and so, that, so we're using that as a. And so that, so we're using that as a leverage, not necessarily because the Comcast agreement is that helpful for Tacoma Park.
But to carry on, Councilmember Schulz's question, there's nothing in the agreement that would preclude us from favoring one over another of the providers.
It is a non-exclusive franchise, and they all have favored nation clauses in them, so that if you do one of them a big favor in terms of contracting, then they can claim that, but this isn't being negotiated by you in any event. So you would just be maybe supporting the use and saying, "This is a great company", and that's a separate matter, and...
You're not going there.
Something you'd talk to your council about, just otherwise, I think.
Okay, I get it.
Did you have anything else, Councilmember Schulz, or, okay, or Councilmember Kreschik?
I just want to ask a question, Ms. Ferguson, I apologize, but the majority of the people who are still awake listening to this have no idea what we're talking about, and I think it's important for people to understand in lay terms. So, I have a question for you, and then I think Ms. Ludlow can answer the question. Have you dealt with municipalities, and I see, I've looked at your bio, I know you represent a number of municipalities in this area of the law, have you dealt with municipalities locally who have elected not to move forward with franchise agreements as such? And if that is the case, what does the playing field look like for that municipality and its residents with options for cable and getting those kinds of services? And then the follow-up question, which will go to Ms. Ludlow, is if we don't move forward with this, what does it mean in actual dollars on an annual basis for Tacoma Park?
I sit on the negotiating team in Prince George's County side also, and that encompasses all of municipalities in Prince George's. They are all working with the county to come up with a franchise agreement that is acceptable from Comcast. By and large, having a big partner like that is in your interest rather than not, and the county took on the obligation to also represent your interests. And so that's why, for one thing, as Suzanne has mentioned, there's more flexibility in terms of what can be used for operating. Okay, so can you go off on your own? Yes, you can, but then you carry a lot less weight. And this whole area of what is an acceptable franchise agreement can involve litigation, it involves needs assessment, which has been done on your behalf at a pretty big expense by the county already. So, it's a difficult area of the law to work through, because it's all regulated, and there's only certain ways to go, and they don't let you free-form it too much. And the fact that this agreement has been approved by the county in your area kind of gives it a lot of support in terms of whether it's a reasonable agreement. I'm not a cable lawyer, and I haven't tried these, any cases like that, in fact, these things don't get tried, nobody wants to do that. All these cases are done in informal negotiations, if you have to go through a formal negotiation process, it is extremely expensive, and pretty much prohibitive unless you're at a county level.
But has anybody done it, in your experience?
No, not locally. I mean, the county went to court with Verizon a number of years ago.
And at the municipal level, in your experience?
No, it's, I guess New York City could do it, it's just, especially when you've had this much work done on your behalf, if there's something in particular that you want, I guess there's nothing that stops you from asking Comcast for it, but it's, since they have it kind of sewn up through the county, and the county is acting on your behalf, they, it's, it would be a surprise, I think, for them to hear something like that, that it's not acceptable.
You know, one of the things that was just fascinating to watch, a little bit on the sidelines, was the negotiations between the county officials and Comcast, and, I mean, Comcast treated them with disdain, and they sent lower-level people time and time again into the negotiations. It took, like I said, it took three years, most of which was useless time spent. And Montgomery County has an enormous amount of weight compared to many other jurisdictions, and so that's how they got treated. You know, we wouldn't, we wouldn't have a chance, and so I think that's, you know, that's one of those things, it's just a, basically, if you, if you go like a Gaithersburg route, which is simply, there's a certain amount that you just get, and you don't do anything, you don't get as much money, and you do get complaints, and they don't end up with much of a television, you know, they don't have much of cable services for their city, so they rely on, a lot of people rely on Tacoma Park.
Thank you, and I would just say, I asked that question to educate people who are watching, but also, because I think I'm on the cusp of that generation that believes that cable is a thing of the past, and this whole cable franchise thing is that carrot and stick that they hang in front of cities and counties to say, "We'll pay you if you enter into this negotiation with us, and we'll give you a good deal", and, you know, I love that the county is doing so much for us in this respect, because they're also getting paid, but not in so many other respects. So I think, I just raise this for my colleagues, because I think a council ten years from now may look at this very, very differently, and there's a movement in this country against that already, so I just wanted to raise that.
Well, and I think that's a really valid point, and that's part of the, that's part of the interesting discussion even about determining what the term of the franchise agreement should be, and they decided to go, you know, to be coterminous with Verizon, but if you think six years from now, what the technology is gonna be, and if anybody's gonna be using any of the same stuff, I mean, it could be completely a different world.
But now it's been recorded, so we set the trends in Tacoma Park?
Right, we set the trends.
That we've had this conversation.
That's right. In terms of answering your other question, though, you know, this deal brings us about $980,000 a year.
Thank you for that.
Councilmember Kofar?
Yeah, just one other question. You mentioned that you had asked in public for better service or responsiveness in terms of the laying of the wires and so on. I mean, would it make sense, just as part of this, to have a whereas clause saying, "We want that"?
I don't have a problem putting that in.
Or could we tell them we want it before we sign it, and see what they say, or is that just blowing in the wind, kind of? I mean, that seems like an important thing, and we ought to ask them to do it.
We certainly, I think we should, I think we should ask them. You know, we have tried, and will continue to try, to go through the state legislature for that. We did get some language in the budget language that has to do with utilities, that helps get to that point, but, you know, they...
Right, but I think it's worth asking, and we can say publicly, "They said no", and maybe some people will want to switch to one of the other two companies, so, I mean, that's...
There you go.
Okay.
Any other questions this evening? No, we're good? Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thanks very much.
All right. That, I believe, is it for us this evening. We are done. We'll see you on Monday.